Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the Monday or Tuesday, October 26th meeting, regular meeting of the common council to order. And if you would please rise and join me in saluting to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Langella. Mr. Sachinelli.
President.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Huberman.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Ms. Revulus.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kites.
Here.
Mr. Theoretis.
Here.
Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenides.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fourteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Made by Miss Revolus. Any corrections, deletions, omissions, additions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Opposed? And abstentions? Minutes that carries unanimously? Next item is public participation. Do we have anybody that's joined the meeting that wishes to address the council?
I don't think so, Mayor, but if you, we have a few attendees. If you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand electronically now. No, I don't think we have anyone tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any council person that has anything from a constituent that they feel needs to be read into the record? Ms. Shanahan.
I think that Ms. King has a comment from Diane LaRocella that she's going to read. Is that right? Okay, great.
Okay, and the other council person? Okay, Ms. King, would you read your correspondence into the record, please?
Ms. All right, Ms. LaRocella sent this to the whole council as well. Common Council, Mayor Rilling and staff, I'm enthusiastic, excuse me, I'm in enthusiastic support of the tree ordinance up for a vote tonight. I regret that I could not attend your Zoom meeting tonight, but wanted to commend the common council, especially the work of the ordinance chair Shanahan, her ordinance committee, the tree advisory committee, the DPW and legal staff and groups such as the Tree Alliance and NRWA in drafting needed changes to our city's tree ordinance. These efforts come at a time when society is starting to realize the important roles that trees and shrubs pay in helping reduce the impact of climate change and providing a healthier and safer city. While this ordinance makes many needed changes, I do hope that the council will be open to amendments in the coming months related to helping to create an educational series for both the homeowners, schoolchildren, and our tree industry as well as all citizens. In addition, I hope we can begin to value our trees based on not only their height and girth, but on their actual ecosystem service value and actual monetary estimate that accounts for the work a tree does to treat our air, our water, and our soils. Thank you again for lifting up this topic, Diane LaRocella.
Thank you. Any further correspondence? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to resignations and appointments, which there are none. And then the mayor's remarks section, I have a couple. Live Green Connecticut is planning a Route 7 electric vehicle corridor celebration press conference at Fodor Farms Wednesday, October 27th. At 11:00 a.m., Live Green Connecticut, Connecticut Deep, and the Federal Highway Administration announced that Route 7 has been officially designated as an electric vehicle corridor. One benefit of this status is that it opens the door for future electric vehicle grants. Friday, October 29th, or Monday, 11/1, we're looking at 11/1 right now. At long last, the city will be naming a part of Chestnut Street after former Officer Caesar Ramirez, who, as you know, unfortunately passed away. He passed away last year. With two honorary street signs. Caesar was, I guess, the quintessential community police officer. He was always out in the public, knew everybody, always had a smile on his face, always was there for the children at Side by Side, the children at Columbus Magnet. And when he passed, there was an outpouring of love and respect for him that I think we all witnessed and made us realize just how special he was to our city. So you're welcome to join us. I was speaking with Mrs. Ramirez today. We're not sure whether it's going to be Friday, but that seems like it might not happen. So we may be pushing it to Monday, but we'll keep you all posted. This weekend is Halloween. I believe it's also fallback. I'm not sure. I think Saturday night might be fallback. If anybody, if I'm wrong, please correct me. Please remember to continue to take precautions such as trick or treating in small groups and incorporating a cloth or surgical mask into the costumes. Avoid indoor parties and gatherings, and if a doorstep is crowded with trick or treaters, patiently wait your turn and don't crowd the doorway. It's also, some people will leave a bucket or a basket with prepackaged treats outside. People can just go up and take it on their own. So I hope our community has a safe and enjoyable Halloween. I know it's always a special time for children. Starting Monday, November 1st, and throughout the month of November, special pumpkin composting bins will be available at the Norwalk Transfer Station and Rowayton Community Center during normal business hours. This allows the residents to turn their pumpkins into compost instead of throwing them into the waste stream. Complete details are at norwalkct.org. Tuesday, November 2nd is election day. Please remember to vote either in person or by absentee ballot. To find your polling place, visit norwalkct.org/townclerk. Remember that this season, like last year, is a no excuse absentee ballot. There you can get an absentee ballot for any reason whatsoever, because some people might be concerned about going to the polls. Thursday, November 4th, Nuvance Health invites the public to a special kickoff event for Light the City Purple from 5:00 p.m. to 5:40 p.m. at 50 Washington Street Plaza for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Norwalk Hospital will provide complimentary purple light bulbs to businesses and residents to join the fun by adorning their buildings, offices, stores, and homes with purple lights, ribbons, and decorations throughout the month. I certainly encourage our residents and businesses to join us at Light the City Purple in November. Again, more details can be found at nuvancehealth.org/litethecity. An important day coming up, November 11th, Veterans Day. It's always a special day. It's going to be a socially distanced ceremony and limited participation at City Hall. We'll be honoring those who served our country with masks and social distancing as the annual ceremony will be from 9:30 till 11:30 a.m. Last but not least, I think you probably all have heard that the Board of Education, I'm sorry, North Public Schools has announced that Mr. Thomas Hamilton is retiring effective December 31st. And just want to make that announcement so we're all aware. I think we can all agree that Mr. Hamilton was a quintessential professional, a person who understood both sides of the budgeting process. When I say both sides, I mean that in a friendly way, because we're all on the same team. But he was a person who understood the limitations and wanted to make sure that we crafted a budget that would provide a world-class education for our students. And I think together, working together with the Board of Education, working together with this body and the Board of Estimate and Taxation, I think we've done a pretty good job. So I know we'll be having some other things in the future, but just wish Mr. Hamilton really a well as he turns this page in his life and enters a new chapter. So that is all that I have, and I will now turn the floor over to our council president, Mr. Sachinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief correction. I think fallback is November 7th. So okay, it's not next weekend, but it is coming soon. So thank you for putting on all of our calendars.
Yeah, it used to be the weekend of Halloween, but I guess maybe they don't do that like that anymore.
Yeah, no, it's always confusing for me every year. I have to double check. Actually, Ms. Shanahan confirmed that for us.
As long as we don't spring ahead that weekend.
Absolutely. And before I move forward, I also do want to wish all the incumbents and all of the candidates the best of luck this coming November 2nd on election day. So good luck to all of you. If there's no objections, I would like to move the item number 5A1, General Counsel Business, to the end of the agenda. That's okay with everybody? All right. Um. Who do we have on consent this evening? I'll take, I'll take, I'll take the consent calendar this evening.
It's Darlene, Nick.
Starling.
Darlene, you ready? Still muted.
You're on mute, Darlene.
Okay, I'm just talking away. Okay. So, thank you. So, Council President Sachinelli, so you said we're moving 5A1 to the end of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So the consent calendar is as follows. 7A1, Authorization to Settle Claims, City of Norwalk versus Old Republic Surety Company Bond Claim for Project Number 3989. 7 A1, Recreation in Parks and Cultural Affairs. Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and Race Coastal Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for the design and permitting for the replacement of the Veterans Memorial Park Public Marina docks for some not to exceed $95,898. Account number noted. 7A2, Authorize Purchasing Agent Sharon Connors to Execute a Purchase Order with M.E. O'Brien and Sons for the Oyster Shell Park Playground Board in Play Surfacing for some not to exceed $75,320. Account number noted. 7B1, Finance and Claims Committee. Accept and Approve the Report of the Claims Committee Dated October 14th, 2021. 7B2, For Informational Purposes Only Narrative on Tax Collections Dated October 14th, 2021. 7B3, For Informational Purposes Only Monthly Task Collectors Report Dated September 2021. Okay, and 7D1A, Under Public Works Committee. Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Execute any and all documents necessary to convey permanent construction and maintenance easement of 5,564 square feet and 257 square feet as shown on the 10 Water Street map. 7D1B, Referral of Item 1A to the Planning Commission for a Report and Recommended Action Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24. 7D1C, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Execute any and all documents necessary to convey temporary construction and an assessed easement of 4,258 square feet as shown on the Water Street map. 7D1D, Referral of Item 1A to the Planning Commission for a Report and Recommended Action Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24. 7D1E, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Execute any and all documents necessary to convey three permanent wetland mitigation easements of 8,022 square feet, 6,838 square feet, and 4,009 square feet each, together with three temporary access easements of 6,871 square feet, 2,022 square feet, and 15,300 square feet each, and a temporary 7,014 square feet construction easement as shown on North Water Crescent Street map. 7D1F, Referral of Item 1A to the Planning Commission for a Report and Recommended Action Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Young. With that, I will take a roll call vote on the consent calendar as read. Councilperson Greg Burnett.
Aye.
Councilperson Dominique Johnson.
Aye.
Councilperson Manny Langella.
Aye.
Councilperson Barbara Smith.
Yes.
Councilperson David Huberman.
Aye.
Councilperson Kadim Roberts.
Aye.
Councilperson Diana Revolus.
Aye.
Councilperson Darlene Young.
Yes.
Councilperson John Kites.
Yes.
Councilperson George Theoretis.
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Keegan.
Yes.
Councilperson George Serenides.
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Livingston.
Yes.
Councilperson Lisa Shanahan.
Yes.
And Nick Sachinelli. Yes. Mr. Mayor, it's unanimous. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachinelli. I believe that brings us to item 7C1. Ms. Shanahan, is that where we are?
I think we have B4 first, right?
Okay.
Correct.
7B4, I don't have my agenda up because as I said, let's say 7B4, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item 7B4 on the Finance and Claims Committee Resolution. Approve a special capital appropriation in the amount of $650,000 to repair damage to the Rowayton Avenue Bridge over Keela Brook and authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds or notes of the city in an amount not to exceed $650,000 to finance said capital appropriation, capital project, as noted. I would like to move this item.
Yes, Mr. Burnett moves the items. Mr. Burnett, would you like to comment on it?
Yes. On this particular item, Tropical Storm Elsa struck Norwalk on July 2021. Approximately six inches of rainfall occurred in a 24-hour period. And the Rowayton Avenue Bridge over Keela Brook was severely impacted. And tonight, we have with us Mr. Paul Sotnick, who was the Senior Civil Engineer with DPW, along with other members of DPW, to take us through the technical issues and plans related to correcting this damaged area, which will be a great enhancement to the Rowayton area. Paul.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. As Mr. Burnett said, Tropical Storm Elsa struck the city of Norwalk on July 8th and dropped approximately 4.3 inches of rain in the city, and 6.1 of it, as soon as 6.1 inches of rain within a 24-hour period, and 4.3 of it was within a six-hour period. So 67% of the rainfall was within 25% of the day. As a result, what ended up happening is the area, cross-sectional area of the bridge, ended up having more water over it than what the area could handle. And as a result of it, it caused a scour along the northwestern foundation of the bridge. The bridge itself consists of a masonry arch structure on the north side of the double yellow line of Rowayton Avenue and a corrugated metal arch structure on the south side. And on the 14th of July, we were asked to come out and take a look at the bridge. We received the customer service request. And I went out, took a look at it, and determined that there was a problem. And we saw that northwest corner had been scoured out. And as a result, the bridge was beginning to fail. And we were working with Freeman Associates at the time for our bridge inspections. And during that time, they had assessed the bridge back on April 16th, 2019, and determined that it was in satisfactory condition. So the result of the scour of the storm is basically what caused the failure of the bridge. And I'll give Freeman a shout out. I called them approximately 11 o'clock in the morning. And before 3 o'clock, they were down here in Norwalk from Hartford to assess the damages and take a look at it. And when they noticed it, they agreed with me that the road needed to be closed immediately for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And we did so by putting in barricades and jersey barriers to prevent traffic from driving over the road. At that point in time, they assessed that the bridge was in a failed condition and needed to be repaired. Essentially, at this point in time, we've tried to move along as quick as possible, trying to use dual paths to, number one, get the permitting in place. Number two, work on getting some kind of a design done by Freeman so that we could get it approved by the various permitting agencies. And number three, be able to get something constructed. So in talking with Sharon Connors, the purchasing agent, Principal Engineer Valideras, and Chief Carr had worked with Ms. Connors to be able to come up with a method that we would be able to do this repair as an emergency repair. And the three key things that we're having to consider and have a major impact on this is the permitting. And I'll talk briefly about that for a second. And we were able to get a Conservation Commission permit from the Conservation Commission in Norwalk on the 16th of September. And right now, the next permitting issue is we have to get a Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and U.S. Army Corps of Engineer permit. We have a permit meeting scheduled for November 4th, which is next week. So we're working on that. The second issue is the material lead time. And in doing a joint venture basically with Timberro Metal Sex to be able to try and get them to look at the bridge and give us an assessment and determine their ability basically to get the materials in a quick time, because an average contractor of the city of Norwalk would not be able to get a box culvert manufactured fairly quickly because of the procurement time. It would take a long lead time to make this and get it done. So we've been working with Timberro Metal Sex to be able to get them to check their sources. And as a large contractor with contacts around the country, they've got contacts with a precast company that would be able to get the material manufactured in far less time than it would take anybody else to do. The third thing that we're aiming to try and do is if we can get the permitting in place, which we hope we're going to be able to do soon, and work with Timberro Metal Sex to get the materials, cut down the lead time severely cut down compared to what it would normally be. We're hoping that we can get them in to do the work in January or February of this year to try and replace that culvert and get the road restored and opened as quick as possible. And I can go into some more of the engineering and technical stuff if you'd like me to. But at this point, what we're doing with Freeman is getting the hydraulic and hydrologic analysis done so that we can determine the final cross-section of the bridge. And what we're looking to do through the permitting is emulate the existing hydraulic capacity of the bridge so that no more water will be allowed through, so it won't flood anybody downstream, but yet not retain any water than it had before and not flood anybody upstream. And in doing that, it's very sensitive to get it to the exact cross-sectional size. But if we emulate that hydraulic capacity, it saves us from having to do what would probably be about a year to a year and a half of permitting applications through Connecticut DEEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're looking to emulate that exactly the way it is. We're going to put back a wing wall and a structure that would basically look similar to the stone that's out there and the stone veneer arch that's there. And by doing a, what we call a form liner with a die, so you'd get a, what would appear to be a stone lined head wall as well as the guardrails that would be put up. We do something along the lines of like the Merritt Parkway, if we were to need those, the Merritt Parkway timber guardrails rather than do a metal beam rail. And the whole point there is to try and keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood to look as close as possible to what it was.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
I believe there was a couple of hands. Tom Livingston had his hand up.
Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. I just want to thank Paul, Vanessa, and Anthony for this work. This is a particularly important roadway. I mean, it takes a lot of traffic from Rowayton up to Brookside and out to Route 1. So it's a critical road, and I really do appreciate the hard work and the diligence that DPW has put into this. I mean, first, they promptly identified the problem, and they're fast tracking it. It's really greatly appreciated. You know, I know it's not been easy. If it was supply chain issues with the water flow with Five Mile River, but I realize that you can appreciate all of you guys have been doing to make sure this does move as expeditiously as possible. So I appreciate it, and I know all the neighbors do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Ms. Shanahan.
Yes, I too want to thank DPW, Paul, and Anthony for getting on top of this. It's been a real trouble, troublesome area over there with all the flooding that we're experiencing even this evening. And so the neighbors are really appreciating your attention there. And it's a big relief to hear you say, and I'm sure I'd like to hear you say it again, that there won't be any impacts upriver or downriver because there has just been so much impact given all of these rainstorms. So we really appreciate that. And perhaps when we're ready to get moving, maybe we can have another neighborhood meeting so we can reassure the neighbors of exactly what the engineering is going to result in. But thank you for all the efforts that you guys have been making. And you've been taking a lot of phone calls from that whole area about the flooding that's going on there. And we appreciate your prompt responses on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Burnett has moved the item. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? That's, Ms. Smith is abstaining. So it carries 13 in favor.
I'm not abstaining.
Oh, okay.
I'm not abstaining. That's a yes. I might.
Okay.
Sorry.
Maybe I was a little bit too fast with my abstention. Okay, so it was carried unanimously, 14 in favor. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for clarifying that. Okay, now that I believe brings us to Ms. Shanahan, 7C1.
It's my turn. It is. So I'd like to approve the following revisions or amendments to the following city code sections. Chapter 112 Trees and Shrubs, Sections 112, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 11215. And so I want, if I can, just speak a little bit about this, Mayor, about our new tree ordinance. And I'm glad that Paul Sotnick's still on, and I'm sorry that Anthony and Chris Torries is not on. But I'll get started a little bit to give people a little bit of a background. The idea for revising our tree ordinance grew out of a tree summit planning meeting Anthony Carr and I scheduled in May of this year. In attendance to that meeting was that a lot of staff from the DPW, Parks and Recs, the Conservation Office, several common council members, including Darlene Young, Tom Livingston, and George Serenides. Representatives from the Tree Advisory Committee attended, as well as a number of conservation groups. And there is a clear consensus from this group that there is more that needed to be done to protect our city tree canopy and to expand it for coming years. So our ordinance committee got right to work. Between councilperson Mr. Livingston and me, I think we read more than 40 local tree ordinances enacted by nearby towns and cities in New York and Connecticut. We interviewed experts for guidance as to the most important features that ought to be included in a tree ordinance. And our initial several drafts were commented on and frankly improved by a large cast of characters, including Anthony Carr, who heads up our DPW group, Chris Torry, our esteemed tree warden, Ken Hughes, who's the interim chief of our Park and Recs group. He's also an arborist, so his help was very good. Paul Sotnick, who wears many, many hats. He's our deputy tree warden. He's a senior engineer. He's the staff person to the Tree Advisory Committee. And he also sits on the Norwalk Tree Alliance. Alexis Chirochetti, who's our senior Uh, Alexis Chirichetti, who's our senior, uh, Conservation Officer, Steve Kleppen, the full Tree Advisory Committee, not to mention Brian Candela, who is our staff person and a member of our Propulsion Council's office. Um, most importantly though, we have a huge set of gratitude to Councilperson Livingston, who as we said, held the pen. He made sure that every word was carefully chosen and every comma was in place. So what are the new features of our, uh, what are the important new features of our tree ordinance? First, we expand the role of the tree warden to take a more proactive role in assessing our tree canopy, protecting trees during construction and also, um, over pruning from the public utilities. We've expanded the role of the Tree Advisory Commission. There are tree experts in town, so we've asked them to oversee the creation of a master tree plan as well as an annual state of the forest that we want them to, uh, make every year to the mayor and to the common council. We've established a voluntary legacy tree program where we will create a catalog of our most important trees in Norwalk. These trees are important because of their size or their age or their species. Uh, we're going to introduce the idea of a required tree. And the required tree idea is that this is a tree that's required by planning and zoning or conservation permit. And this ordinance will protect that those required trees from being removed or pruned to death, as we say. And this has been a real, um, problem in Norwalk where a lot of people take down trees after they get their, you know, their COs. Finally, we're also introducing some innovative uses of fines and penalties to protect our city trees. Um, we've decided that trees can be replaced by replacing it with one that's of like kind and size. That can be very expensive if it's a large tree. A tree can be replaced by using several trees to match the inch for inch replacement of the tree's DBH, which is the width of the tree. Or a tree can be replaced by a payment to a new fund called the Norwalk Tree Accounts. So that's a, that's kind of like a, you know, fifty thousand foot look at our tree ordinance, but I also have some good news that I wanted to report. I'm kind of breaking news here. Um, it's, I'm kind of wearing my hat as the Norwalk Land Trust member. Um, but in partnership with, uh, Katie Plake of Highstead and then also Louise Washer of the Norwalk River Watershed Association. Uh, we just got news yesterday that the Board of Directors of the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation just approved a grant for almost fifty thousand dollars to Highstead Norwalk River Watershed Association and the Norwalk Land Trust to add trees in the corridor between Oyster Shell Parks and Woodward. And the only reason why we got this grant was because we worked so closely with Mr. Carr, um, Ken Hughes, Nick Roberts before, and, um, in partnership, they really helped us obtain this grant. So we're looking forward to, um, sitting down with all of them to talk about how this grant can be expended to put more trees in really a critical place in Norwalk. So I'm happy to open up discussion for any, uh, questions that people might have about the tree ordinance or any further comments. Mr. Livingston.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first off, congratulations on the grant. That's, that's, that's great news. Really glad to hear that. Um, I, I, I really want to think, uh, commend Ms. Shanahan for driving this process. It's been a long one. Um, uh, from when she first organized the, the Tree Summit Planning Meeting she just referenced to reaching out to neighbor, neighboring communities and experts. She's been working extremely hard on this for a long time. And I think our efforts really show in, in the, in the result. And I think it's, it's a great result and I think we owe her great debt of gratitude. I, I also want to, uh, as, as Ms. Shanahan did, uh, commend all of various people that were, well, I won't do all of them, but some, some number of the people who were involved in this, including Mr. Carr, Mr. Sotnick, Mr. Hughes, and, and perhaps especially Mr. Torrey. A lot of this is going to come down on him. Uh, as, as Ms. Shanahan said, we've enhanced the role of the tree warden. And Chris has taken it on with, with great eagerness. I mean, he, he's really, uh, been a great aide and, and we really appreciate the important support he has given to this. On the ordinance itself, I think is a great improvement over the existing ordinance and is an important step in recognizing the importance and value of the trees to the city and to its residents. Among other things, it clarifies and expands the roles of the tree warden and the tree advisory committee, as Ms. Shanahan said. And in doing so, provides a framework for managing and expanding our urban forest. Uh, we now can really approach the, uh, this whole issue with a much more science-based uh, background. So we'll be doing this, not, not to minimize what anybody's done to date, but I think this really provides a, a, a strong framework to move forward. And, and, you know, in addition to Ms. Shanahan's comment about the grant, I think it's, it's worth noting that the mayor and his team have also designated significant ARPA funds for an inventory and canopy assessment as well as a tree, uh, tree planting program to increase our tree coverage. Um, so as, as had been said during, uh, some of our meetings, uh, Ms. Shanahan, as well as Mr. Torrey said, trees have become a movement in Norwalk and I think it's a great thing and I'm glad to be part of it. So, good job, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Langella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, again, just echoing, uh, similar sentiments as Councilperson Livingston. Uh, thank you very much, Chairperson, um, Shanahan, uh, as well as Chairperson Livingston and all of the staff. Uh, lots of work went into this. Um, too many people to thank. Um, I don't think that there's a single, uh, stone left unturned. Um, lots and lots of towns, um, that we, uh, we, uh, benchmarked against. So, um, I appreciate you two leading from the front here. Uh, this is a great thing for Norwalk and, um, most importantly, lots of public feedback here too. So thank you both on this one. And, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Langella. Any further comments or discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank Chair Shanahan. Um, I'm just so grateful that we have a tree ordinance now that is modernized and works with us to achieve our goals. And more than that too, we really did, and if anybody was at our ordinance com- committee meeting last week, like we really did have substantive conversations with residents who really reached out, got some great feedback that actually was incorporated into the ordinance itself. So it was, um, a wonderful process. Lastly, um, one thing we did talk about was the spirit of Norwalk trees in that we want to help protect them. We want to help those, even on private property, to learn and, and cherish those trees even more. So, uh, one thing that did come up, and I talked with conservation commissioners, um, if anybody is living in near an inland wetland or water course, you can always go to the city website and literally search for inland wetland. There's a map. You can see if you've got these trees on your property because those are protected trees. I'm not going to open a can of worms there, but I just want people to be aware that we are, we're really trying this, uh, multi-pronged approach here. And I think that we're building off of that earlier work. Um, and just to make sure we're all stewards of these for the next generation. So thank you, Chair, and thanks, fellow.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, further comments or discussion? Uh, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, you know, I, I just have to admit, I never talked or heard so much about trees before getting on the council and meeting Lisa Shanahan. Um, and just want to say kudos to, to, uh, Lisa and the entire ordinance committee because I'm sure this was a, you know, a labor of love and a lot of hard work. Um, and, and, and I think it speaks to a couple of issues that we, we, we've heard the public and have listened to the public. And I know that all of you have been on this council before me, have heard people talk, the residents talking about trees. But I think we finally got to that point and place where we're really making a strategic, um, difference. And not just talking about it, but actually having something on paper with teeth to help us move forward. You know, to, to respond to all those comments about, you know, Fairfield County and, and Norwalk having, you know, such a smaller tree canopy than our surrounding, um, urban areas. So I really think this is a really great step in the right direction. And I think it also speaks to our staff. I mean, and, and, and as you said, a lot of this, at the end of the day, is going to fall on the shoulders of the folks who work for the city. And so for them to put that time and energy into increasing their workload speaks volumes to, to, to their, um, commitment to doing the right thing too. So, um, kudos to everybody involved before this, after this, and to the mayor. Um, Paul, I know, I think is probably the biggest tree hugger that I know, um, but I'm sure I know more. Um, and, 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 um, it, it just speaks volumes to the commitment of the city moving forward. Um, so, and it takes some time, right? It takes time to get to this point, but the bottom line is we're here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Uh, Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Revolus.
Um, yes, I would just like to commend the whole staff, the entire ordinance committee, uh, Mr. Livingston, for all of your hard work, attention to detail. And Ms. Shanahan, your incredible work, your exemplary leadership, not only on this, uh, tree ordinance, but all the work that you have done, uh, leading the ordinance committee has just been extraordinary. So very well done. Um, you know, it, we are improving our tree canopy, uh, making our city more environmentally sound, sound, helping us move towards a more sustainable Norwalk. So, um, very, very well done. Thank you for, for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Revolus.
Okay, so if my computer works. Um, that being said, I just wanted to say as a tree hugger, um, I think this is a great move for, um, all of Norwalk and to look at Norwalk as a more holistic, um, approach. Holistic also involves our, um, our environment. Um, I especially want to give appreciation to the fact to understanding that, you know, our sections are still one town and affects each and every one from, uh, the lack of trees to the development that causes flooding in other areas. We are all connected and touch each other. So, um, I am, I am a person who really am happy that you, this was being done even before I came on to this council because I was a person a little upset as a parent seeing te- trees come down. So, um, to Ms. Shanahan, Ms., uh, and to council, um, men, Livingston, I think you guys did an amazing job with this. Um, I hope and we continue that, um, not only for our surrounding areas, but for our, our people individually that we look towards our more holistic Norwalk overall. And, um, just for our kids and our future, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Revolus. Any further comments? Mr. Huberman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to, uh, quickly say thank you to Chairperson Shanahan and to Mr. Livingston for the work and the staff, you know, echoing what others have said. And I just, I, I want to just briefly say the two things that, that the excitement of working on this was, was wonderful, but also I, the enhancement of the legacy tree program and the idea of the invitation for, uh, members of our community to put their trees, you know, that, that would be a legacy tree, I think is really wonderful. And the, the strengthening of the required tree, uh, provision, I think is, is wonderful. And I think that this gives a lot of tools to, uh, Mr. Torrey to work with and, and for Mr. Sotnick as well. Uh, you know, I just, I think it's a fantastic thing and, and I'm so happy that we were able to, uh, accomplish this.
Thank you, Mr. Huberman. Further comment or discussion? I too would like to thank Ms. Shanahan and the ordinance committee. Wonderful job, so, so needed. And, uh, I'm encouraged about what this goes to, what this is going to mean for the future and how we're going to move forward with more trees, more funding, more grants and those kinds of things so we can make our community more beautiful and healthier. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? I didn't think so. Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so I think I need now a motion to go into, yes, Ms. Revolus?
Oh, we thought we forgot. We were going for adjournment.
Yeah, that's what I was. I, I forgot about the executive order, but I'll do that. I'll do the executive order though.
I need a motion to go.
Executive session.
Okay, so Ms. Revolus makes a motion to go into executive session. All in favor? Opposed? And, uh...